D. I don't have it. Alrighty, item two C. I didn't have it on my page that time. Alrighty, um, for item two C, we have a special proclamation. This very special proclamation is given to Mr. Mike Rankin. It's a Mike Rankin Appreciation Day.
For the record, Your Honor, Mr. Avery is not meeting the standards and decorum of the council chambers.
So I would like to invite my colleagues, as I usually do for special occasions, whomever likes to, would like to join me to recognize Mr. Rankin and his thirty-plus years of service to the city of Tucson. Mr. Rankin, please join us.
I mean, Ortega got a proclamation after nine years coming, right?
So, so I just wanted to say, um, today is the last meeting that our city attorney will be serving for us in his capacity, a city of Tucson attorney. After twenty-one years of being the attorney for the city of Tucson, rightfully appointed the city attorney, and thirty-plus years, thirty-three, thirty-three years of service for the citizens of Tucson. Today was his last everything, right? His last executive session, his last study session, and his last council meeting. And we all thought that he deserved a day of appreciation specifically dedicated for Mike Rankin. So. I know that we want to all add something, and the vice mayor suggested that we all do it from the dais. So we're going to read the Mike Rankin Appreciation Day proclamation. And, um, I don't know if any of your staff would like to join us. I know that Catalina is here and Sophia is here. Any other family that wants to join us up here? Please join us. Please join us.
I really would appreciate it if you did, because, no, in all seriousness, because anything I'm being recognized for, whether in this proclamation or otherwise, is a product of work of other people. And a lot of those people are here tonight. And I can't tell you how grateful I am to all of you for everything you've done to support me.
So yeah, please join us up here. You could, you don't have to come all the way up, but you can be right here. So on behalf of the city of Tucson and the office of the mayor, it is great pleasure for us to recognize Mr. Mike Rankin and create a very special Mike Rankin Appreciation Day for his thirty-three years of service to the residents of the city of Tucson, mayor and council, his entire team at the city attorney's office, and every single department director and employee of the city of Tucson. So. I'm gonna read my big font, Mike Rankin.
That's cheat code, that's more.
So whereas after earning his BA from Colgate University and JD from the University of Arizona, Michael G. Rankin began his legal career with the city of Tucson August seventeenth, nineteen ninety-two. That's when I graduated from high school, I just wanna say. In the nineteen hundreds. As a legal intern just out of law school. And whereas he served as a legal intern and prosecutor in the city prosecutor's office for over seven years, and he transferred to the civil division of the city attorney's office in January sixteenth, two thousand, again serving honorably and effectively as a line attorney for over four years. And whereas he was appointed city attorney on June first, two thousand and four, and whereas one of the long, he is one of the longest-serving attorneys in the history of the old pueblo. His over twenty-one years of appointed service has left a lasting impact on the improvement of the Tucson community in both the civil and criminal divisions of the city attorney's office. And whereas his service stalwart leadership and wise counsel has guided three mayors, nine city managers, and sixteen different council members through much change and many challenges, including economic recession, work furloughs, the January eighth, twenty-eleven shootings, and the COVID-nineteen pandemic and social unrest. And whereas his office also assisted three city clerks to successfully carry out eleven city primary elections, including, one recount, ten city general elections and numerous special elections, including bond, franchise, and charter amendment elections, as well as elections to decide proposed initiatives. And whereas he has attended six hundred and sixteen study sessions, but who's counting? Mayor and council meetings, numerous special, and whereas during his tenure, he supervised the preparation of two thousand one hundred and eighty-four ordinances and four thousand two hundred and thirty-five resolutions for mayor and council consideration and adoption. Whereas his office has also provided legal guidance to the many departments of the city, each one having its myriad unique issues. And whereas he successfully expanded the internal litigation unit of the city's attorney's office in size and subject matter scope, saving the taxpayers significant monies while spearheading the development of a skillful and effective group of in-house attorneys and staff to defend the rights and interests of the city and its employees against lawsuits. And whereas he successfully defended the city's charter-based partisan election system multiple times against various forms of legal attack. And whereas he was recognized by the public lawyer section of the state bar as a distinguished public lawyer in two thousand and sixteen, and by the ACAA as a distinguished municipal attorney in two thousand and twenty-three, and with a career achievement award in two thousand and twenty-five. And whereas he has earned the respect and admiration of his family, friends, and colleagues as an exemplary civil servant, and we will miss you and your insightful guidance, we are grateful for your leadership, legacy, and lessons learned. Now therefore, I, Regina Romero, mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five to be Mike Rankin Appreciation Day in this community. And with this whereof, I have here on Tucson my hand and cast the seal of the city of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this ninth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five. Congratulations, and thank you for your service, Mike.
I feel really old, listening to all that. How many ordinances? Six hundred and sixteen study sessions. It seemed like maybe only six hundred. Thank you all so much. And as I, as I mentioned earlier, as I was looking out at the folks here, and I mentioned this Thursday, last Thursday, when we had the retirement event. You know, my name's at the top of the pleadings or at the filings in court, et cetera. But for twenty-one years, it's been the, every single achievement, every single accomplishment, every good result produced by the city attorney's office is a result of someone else, someone's work who isn't named Mike Rankin, and I mean that. The, what I tried to do was I just tried to give these exceptionally talented folks the space that they needed to do their job as best as they could and to support them and let them know that if things maybe went a little sideways, that it'd be okay, and I'd have their back. And the reward I got was extraordinary support from them. And I'm grateful, I'm very grateful to all of you. The other thing I'll talk about, because as you can imagine, the last, especially the last several weeks has been a time of reflection. Look back on thirty-three years, or especially the last twenty-one years. And all the things that happened, some of which are mentioned here. And really, only one thought just kept coming back to the surface, which is just family. I never would have had the opportunity to have this career at all if it weren't for the support of my family. Not to mention to be able to do it for so long, for twenty-one years. And that includes my parents. My dad, who was a professor at the UVA, who taught teachers, he taught a whole generation of teachers, who went to work in Tucson, he created a writing program that lasted for over forty years at the university. My mom was a teacher at TUSD, a science teacher and junior high science teacher. My brothers and sisters are just extraordinary. My sister Cynthia is a nurse who provides hospice care. Talk about truly important work, right? Brother Tom, who's here, is a longtime prosecutor, longtime prosecutor with county attorney's office, now runs a division for the Arizona Attorney General's Office. And, and I want to make sure this is on the record, who is the best attorney in the family? And I mean that, I mean that. My sister Janine, a teacher, elementary school teacher, recently retired after a career at TUSD. My brother Dave, forensic anthropologist, who spent more than a dozen years traveling all around the world, finding and exhuming and identifying the remains of killed and missing American soldiers. I mean, I was an attorney for twenty-one years, but these are extraordinary people. And then, of course, there's my wife and kids. I'll talk about my kids first, but I won't forget my wife. This time, there's a long story there. Sophia, maybe you're gonna see a theme here, is a teacher, elementary school music teacher. And my son Connor, who can't be here tonight, is a videographer and illustrator and animator and drone pilot and content creator and music video producer. And you may have heard me mention this once or twice, but my kids have a band that's incredible and perform all around the city and across our region. And, and of course, there's my wife, Catalina, who's an artist, she's a volunteer, she's a band manager, more commonly called the momager. And she's the one who holds it all together, especially me. And so when I said that my name's on this or on the day of appreciation, which I think should be like a week or a month. It, it's a family accomplishment and a team accomplishment. And I'm grateful to every one of them and always will be. And to every one of you. The mayor and council, it, it was never lost on me for a single day that in order to be able to do my job, I had to have the trust of the people I was working for. And I don't take that lightly. It, it was something that had to be earned. And just the graciousness that, that I received from all of the elected officials, especially all of you up here tonight. I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Okay, we do a picture. Before you all leave, can we do a picture with all of you, with your Mike Rankins?
And that was wonderful. Okay, now we go on to item two D. Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. City managers' communication number two seven seven dated September ninth is received into and made part of the record. May I have a motion to approve the appointment in the report, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay, there's a motion in a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Motion carries. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? None, alrighty. We move on to item three, and this is the summary of current events. And I know that some of my colleagues want to say some words to Mr. Rankin, so I think this would be the most appropriate space to add the comments. But item three, we need to read the heading. Mayor and council reports, summary of current events. City managers' communication number two seven five dated September ninth is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events of activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. And I know that my colleagues all want to add their voice to thanking Mr. Rankin, and we'll start with the vice mayor.
Well, I'm gonna start with my current events, mayor. So on Sunday, September fourteenth, at eight AM, the public is asked to join the Sunnyside Foundation for their annual Gives Week Health and Wellness Fair. It's an opportunity to connect with community resources and local organizations at their free, family-friendly health and wellness fair that also coincides with the Borrito Run, and it will be taking place at Mission Manor Park at sixty-one hundred South Twelfth Avenue. And then on Friday, September nineteenth, at five PM, join the Sunnyside Foundation for their Gives Day Black Party. Come celebrate the work towards hitting their fundraising goal of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Join the fun at American Eco with music, performances, and more. American Eco is located at fourteen thirty-nine South Fourth Avenue. And, um, Mike, I, at twenty-three years old, when I first met you, I used to wonder how you didn't get tired or bored of your job. I was supposed to go to law school and then presented that, that trajectory, but spending so much time with you in executive session has made me realize that you're a nerd when it comes to problem solving. And you always made legal jargon sound, you know, very approachable in a way for us to understand. So I always appreciate the way that you educated and informed us. It's also been really annoying to watch you move with a pep in your step since you announced your retirement. I'm really happy for you, and it was moving to see the outpour of love, wisdom, and silliness at your retirement party. So thank you for including us in that celebration. I also want to thank you for your over twenty-one years of service to the city of Tucson. You have been a steadfast leader in your office. You have given so much of yourself to this organization, and we're all gonna be so much better off for it, especially this mayor and council, who will go back and ask themselves, what would Rankin do? I wish you so much rest, peace, joy, and adventure in the coming years. And I want to thank your wife and kids for sharing you with us. And when you're ready to volunteer, I have a couple of openings in some boards and commissions, and I would love to appoint you. Thank you.
Council member.
Let me do a few things, this is gonna be a tough one. This morning, I was at the funeral for Joe Caesar. For those people in Tucson who know Joe Caesar, he was kind of a surrogate uncle or godfather to a lot of people. He actually was born on the south side of Tucson, he went to Wakefield. He lived in government housing most of his life. Joined ROTC, taught at Sunnyside High School. Eventually became a, like, went to work for a realty company. He grew up in a class of, there's about forty of them that went to Tucson High between nineteen fifty-three and nineteen fifty-six, that never lost a football game. Ultimately, he worked to start the National Bank of Arizona, one of the largest in Arizona. He built fifty-one fifty-one East Broadway, also known as the Great Western Bank Building. It actually housed IBM here when they moved here. And above that, it's still the largest office building square footage wise in the city of Tucson. He was a Tucson conquistador. He served on the board of the University Medical Center. He was in the inner circle of Governor Geral Castro and helped him get elected, and Senator Dennis Deacon-Saney, who even to the day he died was his best friend. He served on the Arizona Judicial Commission and helped select judges. He had a constant balance between charity, service, and prosperity for the city. I want to send out my condolences to Larry and Jeff and the rest of the Caesar family. They, his contributions to the city are remarkable. And we've lost another titan in Tucson. I also want to talk about Las Laveras tonight. Las Laveras has been doing the Arizona Symphonic Winds on Saturdays at Udall Park since I took office. The really cool thing is that he does it at the Las Laveras Amphitheater. And Laslo was part of that class. He even taught music at Tucson High. The Winds are an all-volunteer community concert band purporting a variety of music for all ages, including overtures like classics, marches, Broadway tunes, and adapted popular music. All concerts begin in the park at seven PM every Saturday in September. Bring lawn chairs and blankets, a picnic basket. You have to have a permit if you bring a bottle of wine. Enjoy the free entertainment for the whole family. This Saturday's program is really special. It's featuring the Catalina High School marching band. And last year, Catalina High School didn't have one. That school's really doing well. It's my dad's alma mater, so it means a lot that that's happening this week. Which brings us to Mike Rankin. So first of all, for tonight, if you'll indulge me, Mike Rankin is one word. It's Mike Rankin. There's no Mike, there's no attorney Mike Rankin, there's no Mr. Rankin, it's just Mike Rankin. So as I describe my adventures with Mike Rankin, every single time I say Mike Rankin, you echo and say. So let me tell you about Mike Rankin.
Mike Rankin.
One word, my dad made that up. He just started calling him one day, he said, Paul, you need to call up Mike Rankin.
Mike Rankin.
And. So it's September ninth, it's Mike Rankin Day on his, oh, wait, sorry. It's September ninth, it's Mike Rankin.
Mike Rankin.
Day. And we honor him in his last day as Tucson's CA, that's city attorney. Mike Rankin.
Mike Rankin.
We give you tremendous gratitude. Mike Rankin.
Mike Rankin.
But I don't want to speak with too much platitude. I ran out of space right there, because I knew I was gonna start crying. So the cool thing, some stuff I want everybody to know about Mike Rankin.
Mike Rankin.
We're both Rinkon Rangers, and we've spoken as much as attorney and client and, you know, in our professional relationship, we've spoken almost as much on the phone about that, but also about things, just everybody Tucson, Tucson, everything that Tucson's care about, from music to athletics to arts to traffic to the, and it's been an incredible ride. It, it's an amazing opportunity to have that perspective all the time. The other thing I'll tell you is that Mike Rankin.
Mike Rankin.
Might, we might, we might not, we might need to start calling him John Marshall. Now, you're gonna love this, this is my favorite thing. So John Marshall is a legendary jurist, right? He was the chief justice of the Supreme Court. I mean, he's John Marshall, not Mike Rankin. But what you don't know is that Mike is about to become a roadie for his daughter's band. Did you guys know that? Mike Rankin is gonna be a roadie. Mike Rankin, roadie. All right. Well, in nineteen ninety-two, I went to go see Metallica. And Metallica had been in a concert about a week before that, actually, three or four weeks before that. And their lead singer and rhythm guitarist, James Hetfield, walked in front of a magnesium sulfur stage explosive and burned himself. And he could not play the guitar. So they got a legendary roadie named John Marshall to play his guitar parts. So now, Mike Rankin shares the distinction of the name John Marshall in that he is both a legendary attorney and now a legendary roadie. And so for Mike Rankin, I'm gonna see you quite a bit as you retire, actually, a lot more. So I'm really looking forward to it, I'm looking forward to seeing you tomorrow. And I, this isn't goodbye for me, I'm just, I want, I just, I guess the bigger thing I'd say is how grateful I am. It's just how grateful I am to have you around. And, and it's, it's beyond a, it's a friendship now, but it's a calming thing. It's a, it's a. Every so often, you meet somebody in your life where after you talk to them, you're either calmed down or you have a little more pep, or you just, you feel you know what you're doing. And that helps when you have someone like Mike Rankin in your corner. The city's gonna miss you, you're gonna be impossible to replace, and, and I hope that the next person does the job half as well as you have, and then we'll be just fine. Thank you so much, you've grown into the best attorney in the city. And one of the best city attorneys in the country, that's what I really believe.
My turn, and I have a prop. We are approaching tree planting season. And I want to encourage you to join with many people who have supported the mayor's Million Trees for Tucson program. What are we at, a hundred and fifty thousand trees?
A hundred and fifty thousand.
That's amazing. So it's easy to plant a tree, you need a hole. And there's some detailed instructions. There's some places you can get cheap trees. You can get two-shade trees for your yard through, for five bucks apiece from Tucson Electric Power, one of the better things that TEP does. One of the better things that TEP does. Trees for Tucson, a nonprofit and our partner in a million trees program. There's a great variety of trees about this size, 30 bucks. And there's wonderful nurseries all across town. Or you can do what I did and take a seed and plant it. This is a two-year-old, maybe three-year-old planting. We need more trees. They provide shade and love and everything. And when I look at a tree, I think about Mike Rankin.
Mike Rankin.
No, that's a horrible, um, transition, but, um, thank you, Mike. I really appreciated having you as my lawyer at your peak. You did great work. And I think I told you this once, every so often I imagine I'm in a remake of the movie, uh, Fear and Loathing in Las Vegas. And I'm driving to Las Vegas in an open coupe, having done a lot of drugs. And my lawyer is sitting next to me doing the same thing. Nothing to do with reality, by the way, but that's, that's how I imagine Mike Rankin. Have a great retirement. Thank you, my friend.
Councilman Lee.
I wasn't sure how Kevin was gonna follow Paul. And now I'm not sure how I'm gonna follow Kevin, but it's, it's okay. So Mike, a lot has been said beyond the 33 years of service at the city and the 21 years as the city attorney. We're all so deeply grateful. You know, I came into this work really intimidated by legal stuff. And every time I call you and talk to you about it, I say that the legal stuff is my least strong area. But I always appreciated how you were somewhat of a teacher in executive session. And you always made sure that you brought us along and that we thoroughly understood everything that we were doing. And I, I saw you as such a critical strategic leader and a teacher really for me. So I just appreciate that spirit that you brought to the job. And then the other piece on a more personal front is you really modeled how to be in an executive position and still put your family at the top. And that's a hard thing to do, but you lived it. Tim lives it. The mayor lives it. So many of my colleagues up here live it. But I really appreciate how you have always demonstrated that and shown, um, people who have younger children how to grow up and be like you when we grow up. So thank you so much for everything you've done for us.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Perez.
Uh, my time has been short with you, Mike, but I've observed you for about a decade now. Um, and having, uh, been around your family, uh, I know that everything that has been said, uh, holds true. Um, and I think that to Nikki's point, uh, you really are emblematic of an executive that protects his people, um, while caring for his family, caring for his community. Um, and it's deeply admirable and I'm appreciative for the time that I have had, uh, with, on counsel with you.
Councilmember Ulrich.
I think it's, are you on? Oh, she's on her phone. We could hear her on the TV, but not in here. Okay, we're, we're checking. We're checking Karen.
So I can speak for Karen. Mike Rankin is the favorite city attorney I've ever worked with. Regardless of which ward I was representing at the time. And, uh, I'm just stalling Karen, trying to give you some time to get your audio.
Point, point of order, Mayor. I'm not sure this is proper, um, for the city attorney to speak for a councilman.
Eh, eh, anything working or?
There you go. We can hear you.
Nice. Uh, well, that just shows you why I love Mike Rankin so much. Um, and I'm gonna cry because, um, we, we have been at this for a long time, for 20 years. Um, Mike was the attorney when I was first elected in 2005. And so, um, Mike, I just respect you so much. And, um, as everybody can tell, who you are hearing today is the Mike that I've heard every day of my service. Uh, a humble, kind, respectful, uh, good man. And, um, so thank you, Mike. And I would guess that we feel the same way that if in our service, as you have, uh, you've represented the very best of the people of Tucson. You reflect the very best in our community and in all of us, and I thank you for that. And, um, I'm gonna find out where the next gig is so that we can have a beer. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Um, well, you know, I started for Karen, working as a council aide. And, um, I remember very clearly, uh, how attentive, uh, you were to a measly council aide, uh, asking questions, um, about the law and how the law, uh, serves our community and our residents. And so I, I have known nothing other than Mike Rankin as the city attorney of the city of Tucson. And so I started my career in service with you as the city attorney. And, um, it's been a crazy ride. It, it, it has been an honor of my life to be able to serve with you as a council aide, as a council member and as mayor. And every piece of that service that I have given to the community, you've been there and then some. Um, and, um, you know, for the people of the city of Tucson, you should know that the city attorney is a really important part of service, uh, to our residents. And because of you and your leadership, Mike, uh, we've gone to bat for the residents of the city of Tucson from, uh, preemption tries, uh, from the state legislature, uh, to standing up, um, against the governor and preemptive strikes that he's tried against the residents of the city of Tucson. Uh, everything from our election systems and how we choose our mayor and council, um, to source of income protection, to, uh, your partnership, uh, with me throughout SB 1070, your advice to us as a mayor and council. Um, to, you know, most recently as mayor, uh, going through COVID. I think you told Catalina, uh, you spent more time with me and Mike Ortega than you did with you, her and your family at the time. Um, it's true. I mean, we were up at 12:00 midnight making decisions, uh, for the residents of the city of Tucson and to protect them and their health. Uh, to the vaccines and our mandate with vaccines, to, uh, social unrest and custody death. Um, trying new pro, pilots and programs and service to our residents. Uh, it just has been incredible. And, um, I really am lucky to have had your experience, your ethic, uh, your commitment to our residents by my side since I first started my service. I, I appreciate you and I'm really, I'm really happy that you get to, um, say, this is where I end. Uh, I'm gonna be a roadie now. And, uh, I've always appreciated, uh, that from you, your clarity and your sense of responsibility to mayor and council, to the city, um, to your employees at the city attorney's office and to, and to the residents of the city of Tucson. Um, I too appreciate your balancing of family and, um, and service to others. And those are the values that make you such an incredible, incredible city attorney. But most importantly, such an incredible human being. Thank you, Mike, for your service to all of us. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna say I love Tucson and I thank you all for giving me the opportunity uh, to be in a disposition, uh, for the city that I love.
Alrighty, now we move on to item four, city managers', uh, um, summary of current events.
City managers' report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 276 dated September 9th is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of announcements for tonight before I go into the Mike Rankin part of the show. Um, I'd like to provide an update on the temporary closure of Armory Park. Uh, people have been hearing quite a bit about that and so I just wanted to give some context to that. Uh, this closure is part of our Tucson Delivers Voter Approved Parks Bond Program, uh, which will bring more than 1.5 million dollars in upgrades to the park, which will include the planning of 80 additional trees, new bunch, new benches and picnic tables, upgraded lighting, renovated restrooms, a new dog park, irrigation upgrades and a new shade structure and performance area. While we're doing those improvements, we do recognize that disclosure has affected a weekly effort to provide food for unsheltered residents in the area. In response to concerns over that issue, city staff have reached out to the service providers, volunteers and community members to share information, alternative food resources available nearby. Uh, we do deeply appreciate the mutual aid groups, service providers and volunteers who continue to serve our most vulnerable neighbors. And we're committed to supporting these efforts by offering alternate locations for food distribution and ensuring the process is safe and accessible for those in need. Uh, for those in need of assistance, the city has a list of resources posted on our website at tucsonaz.gov. Uh, additional announcements are, um, as I like to do during these times, um, acknowledge great work by city staff. Um, we recently received three awards at the Arizona Plant, State Planning Conference, uh, across different departments, actually. The Planning and Development Services Department won the Planning Excellence Award for the Community Corridors Tool, which was directed by this mayor and council. The Department of Transportation and Mobility won the Great Public Places Award for the Stone Avenue Cycle Track. And, uh, the project Activate El Presidio was awarded the APA Arizona Southern Section Award for our partnership with Rio Nuevo. So congratulations to all those involved in those wonderful projects. Having said that, if you're familiar with the Dean Martin Celebrity Roasts of the past, you may be familiar with the comedian Red Buttons. And when, when somebody would be roasted, Red Buttons would invariably come up and question why that person would be having a dinner. And today it's about why, why would Mike Rankin? Why would, why appreciation day for Mike Rankin? Father Isubio Quino never got an appreciation day from this mayor and council. Former President Barack Obama, who spent time in Tucson, never got an appreciation day from this council. And even local artist Sevilla Rankin and the Sound, great musical band that they are, never got an appreciation day from this mayor and council. So it does bring, bring the question, why, why Mike Rankin? And, but I, I, I would pause and say, I think numerous reasons have been given. I'm just adding my voice to it that, uh, this, this job would be impossible without a great partner in the city attorney. And I speak for the many city managers that came before me to say thank you for all of your advice and counsel. I'm glad today we didn't add number 10 to the list. Um, and, um, I wish you nothing but the best. You have a wonderful family. They're ready to have you. We're ready to be done with you. And, uh, I send you on your way.
Item five.
Liquor license applications.
City manager's communication 287 dated September 9th is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's agenda, we have two applications for new licenses. One application for a person transfer and 14 special event applications. The agent has withdrawn the application for, for item 5B3, Ignite Sign Art Museum. All applications, all other applications are in compliance with city requirements. We received a written protest for item 5B, 5C9, the special event at our Mother of Sorrows Parish. That item will be considered separately. So an appropriate motion at this time would be to forward items 5B1, 5B2, items 5C1 through 5C8 and 5C10 through 5C14 to the state liquor board with a recommendation of approval.
So move.
Second, Your Honor.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilman Lee.
Here, just to confirm with the clerk, did we have some speakers on one of these items for Ward 4? Or would that be?
There was some speakers in support for, um, the Circle K, uh, liquor license.
I, since they took time to show up, I just wanted to make sure if there were folks who wanted to speak on the Ward 4 Circle K item, that there could be an opportunity for that.
Absolutely.
Because they had to come a long way to get to say hello today.
We're not considering it separately, are we?
No.
Okay.
No, because it's, it's in compliance.
Okay.
Is it possible to hear from them?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, there are four speakers. Okay, there are four speakers. Do you want, do you want to?
I would love that because if they took time to come here, I would love to.
Okay, so, um,
do you want us to vote on the, on the motion on the floor or just?
Well, this would be part of the motion, so.
So we'll, we'll, uh, close with a vote after the speaker Andrea. Uh, Lenkowitz, Lebovitz? I'm sorry. If I'm massacring your last name.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. It's Andrea Lukowitz, attorney for Circle K. Uh, Councilmember Lee, thank you for, uh, letting us take a minute just to say hello, let you know that we are here. Um, Circle K was here. We were, um, a couple of weeks ago. We've heard you loud and clear. We want you to know that Circle K is here to work with all of you, to do the right thing for the community that it serves. And we are open to any discussions. I, um, intend to speak with Vice Mayor Santa Cruz tomorrow. We already set that up. And I, we did call your office, um, Councilmember Lee, uh, yesterday. I'm afraid we missed you. Um, but if there's any questions about this location, um, I'm here with Jordan and Troy. You have our cards. So if there's anything or any questions that you have, we're here to answer and happy to discuss any matters.
Thank you so much, Andrea. If Troy or Jordan want to add something, I think we also have TJ.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. I just want to give a shout out to Mike Rankin. There you go, Mike. Congratulations. And again, we are here. We want to be a great partner. I'm a local, uh, I've been a Tucson resident, grew up in Tucson. In fact, I live in Paul's, uh, ward and, you know, I've been loving Circle K. When I grew up, I went to Circle K. And I want to make our stores bigger, better and nicer and close down some of the older, older yucky models. So appreciate anybody's support and we're here for any questions you have. Thank you.
Any others? I also have TJ.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Rankin Day. Uh, my name's TJ Pritchett, a Tucson resident since 1993. Uh, very proud and honored to be here before all of you. I've been a Circle K employee for about five years now. I'll actually be directly overseeing the operations of the location in question this evening. Um, and happy to promote the confident nature with which we operate our business and responsible retailers within the community. And again, just an honor to be here before you. Any questions you may have, I'm happy to address or, uh, you know, address any concerns that you may have as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Everything was in compliance and we didn't hear any concerns from neighbors, but I just wasn't sure who all was on the speaker card. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing them to speak.
Thank you so much for doing that. Um, anything else on this motion? Alrighty, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Motion carries.
Do you have the one, uh, Mother of Sorrows special? I don't have it. I know it. But there's a, uh, written opposition.
No. Uh, Councilmember Cunningham, did you wanna, um?
Yeah, for the Alma, the Alma Mother of Sorrows. For the Our Mother of Sorrows item, uh, is Tabitha here? No, Tabitha. Okay. We had one neighbor that we got... She sent the letter in on the 14th, and we got it today. A lot of her concerns is parking. So this is what I'm gonna do. First of all, it's a weekend special event license in a church. And there are several board members on the church that live in that neighborhood. So I gotta say there's a symbiotic relationship between the church and the neighborhood. I mean, Hank Krizik lives right in the neighborhood, and he's their... one of their deacons. So I want to make sure... The big thing is that the church, one, responds to the neighbor, because it seems like they didn't respond to her. Her bigger issue is the parking and some of the behavior on some of the bigger events with Our Mother of Sorrows. So I want to put that on the record. Second thing I want to put on the record is for the city manager, is I'd like to see if we can have some parking enforcement for this event on October 10th and 11th. And with that, I'm gonna move that we recommend approval.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Any other two? They're separately? Okay. Excellent. So we move on to item six.
Oh, this is... Are you from Our Mother? Do you want to come up and say a couple things?
Can you please speak into the mic?
I'm the parish bid for Mother of Sorrows, and I wanted to appreciate your bringing up this matter. We have reached out to Ms. Grafton. I have emailed her back when we first got the copy of the complaint. It was the first time anyone actually identified themselves for a complaint, and we addressed it right away. I also sent her a letter via US mail, and I also tried to call her a few times, but her phone never picked up. But I wanted to assure her in the city that we take her concerns very seriously. We want to be good neighbors. Now that we know who the person is, we have offered her... We're gonna put cones up over her parking, make sure it's blocked off. We have our security team now we can address her and make sure it's being controlled regularly. We will have off-duty Tucson Police Department as part of our event, and we'll make sure that if any issues or any concerns that they can take action right away.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All righty, so we move on to item six.
Call to the audience.
Ms. Clerk, do you have any announcements?
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing. Call to the audience will last 30 minutes, and speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. The green light will turn on when you're called to speak. It will turn yellow and beep. Once you have 30 seconds left of your allotted time, when your three minutes are up, the light will turn red, and then a timer will begin beeping. If that happens, please immediately conclude your remarks.
All righty, we have our first speaker. Who is Tom Rankin?
Mayor and Council, my name's Tom Rankin. I live in Ward 1. I'm not a paid speaker, and I know about the three minutes. I'm Mike Rankin's oldest brother, one of five Rankin kids. And I'm here to thank city attorney Mike Rankin for the distinguished job he has done for you and the citizens of Tucson for 30-plus years, the last 21 as city attorney. From time to time, Brother Mike would ask to steal a minute or two during these mayor and council meetings to recognize family member, friends, whatever. And tonight, I thought I'd take the opportunity to get even... I mean, return the favor. Sorry. Brother Mike, as you heard, got his college degree at Colgate University, just like our father did. Immediately, he faced the dilemma, though, that people who get a Bachelor of Arts degrees have if they don't want to be a teacher. What am I gonna do? And the answer is simple: you apply to law school. And that's what he did, and he got admitted. But shortly before law school, I heard a knock on the door in my university-area apartment, and it was Brother Mike. He was just wondering if he might crash on my couch for a little while while he got his feet underneath him for his going to law school. And I agreed. And before he knew it, two years had gone by, and Mike was still on my couch. That all ended in year three, when he met Catalina, which he calls "the luckiest day of his life." He went off with her. He got married and created a wonderful family. So Brother Mike started his career at city prosecutors and went over to city civil office for a little bit. And he applied for magistrate position. And he was really disappointed when he didn't get selected. But he called me, and he said, "Look, there are people on the commission and other city leaders who said they have a better position for me." And that turned out to be city attorney. And with their support, he got appointed for the first time as city attorney. He has served as city attorney with honor, integrity, and distinction over the last 21 years. He's been recognized by the state bar and numerous municipal law associations. He's dedicated his time to the people of this city, often at the expense of time with his own family. And we've missed him while he's been with you all and the work he does for the city council. Tomorrow, he's gonna step down and return to his family, where he can fully concentrate on his other jobs: chief rodeo and sound tech for Sophia Rankin and The Sound, of course; tie-dye clothing artist, is wearing some of it today; resident groundskeeper and repairman for his own house and his best friends, his birds, dogs, and desert tortoise, the most recent addition. So, Mayor and Council, I wish you the best of luck in filling his position. I think whoever you select better have big feet, because he's got enormous shoes to fill. And Brother Mike, I and the Rankin families are immensely proud of you and your accomplishments. We're blessed to have you back, and we love you. Thank you.
I was hoping for more stories.
We haven't even started talking about the fountain yet.
Thank you so much, Tom. I appreciate it. Anthony Donofrio?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Anthony Donofrio. I am the Director of Wages of Benefits for Tucson Firefighters Association, Local 479. Today's decision during executive session is monumental and will shape the future of presumptive cancer claims, not only in Tucson, but throughout Arizona and North America. When Tucson firefighters are called upon, our response is ferocious, be it to a patient suffering from a cardiac arrest, a construction worker trapped in a ranch, a trench, or when the Tucson house is engulfed in flames. We selflessly risk our lives to protect our community. The decision to disregard our own well-being is not easy at all. Like you, we have families of our own, and we want to witness the milestones and achievements of our children, and maybe someday even hold our grandchildren. Still, at the end of the day, your Tucson firefighters choose to prioritize the lives and property of the community above that of our own well-being. When we take action, there is no room for uncertainty. Conversely, when we submit workers' compensation claims for cancer resulting from occupational exposure, there should be no questions as to whether or not those claims will be accepted. Now, knowing that this mayor and council have our backs when we are diagnosed with a presumptive cancer, it provides us with a peace of mind that helps justify our decision to continually and willingly risk our lives while providing selfless, exceptional, and aggressive fire suppression services to the Tucson community. While today is a huge step in the right direction, we still have work to do. The hazards your firefighters face are ever-increasing as our workers' compensation claims for occupational cancer. We owe it to our firefighters, their families, and the Tucson community to approve their workers' compensation claims for cancer resulting from occupational exposure. And we owe it to them to memorialize the process in our labor agreement so that leadership change does not have a negative consequence on future workers' compensation claims for presumptive cancer. Local 479 looks forward to collaborating with you so we can provide our future firefighters with the peace of mind that they need to continue to risk their lives for this community. I took office about a little over two years ago now, and this was something that I was tasked with by our members. We have to figure out a way to increase our coverage when it comes to presumptive cancers. And I just want to thank each and every one of you from all of you. Today was monumental. It's huge for our people to be able to go to work knowing that we are going to be covered if we come down with occupational cancer. So from Local 479 and from me, I just wanted to thank you all sincerely.
Thank you, Anthony. Reyes Suarez?
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me. My name is Reyes Suarez. I'm a Tucson native. I'm speaking on my own behalf. I'm here to address the ever-growing and pervasive mass surveillance that initiatives that are popping around the city. Last time I spoke was about the misuse of temporary cameras and drones placed and operated at community vigils that took place around the town. One for vigil for a person who died from ICE raid, and the other two from Palestinians who were killed in the West Bank. I don't think there will be many here who will doubt that those are gross misuse of funds and manpower, but clear intimidation of people using their First Amendment. What I didn't get to cover was the implementation of flock license reader cameras around the city. We need to stop the addition of flock cameras. Even if the company claims that they're no longer a DHS contract in other locations, the national database has been asked through leaks of ICE from local police for deportation information. Supreme Court, I don't know if everyone realizes, has just ruled that it's okay to racially profile now for ICE. It's scary. I'm terrified. We don't need to needlessly give them access to all of our movement and our locations as well. Not too long ago, there was a police man in Texas who used out-of-state flock camera data to search through 83,000 cameras to look for a woman who was seeking a safe out-of-state abortion. That's terrifying, and that's wrong. And we shouldn't be in support of those initiatives. There are also reports of local police, not here, but otherwise, who are misusing that information to stalk ex-partners. It's just too much access, too much power for any people to be using, honestly. I understand that it's a mercurial ambition to protect your citizens, but these initiatives, there's just too much avenue for abuse. How long is this data saved on these databases? Who all has access to that? If you all can't answer me right away, I expect you to find out and come up with some sort of plan on that. There is a responsibility to adapt to regulation and representatives of people in the system whose privacy and leverage is at stake. We desperately need constant constraint against unchecked exploitation. I don't know what y'all's strategy is for this fascist government that's popping up. To me, it kind of seems like a far cry from bravery. I just want you to understand that silence is complicity. Please step up and protect your citizens. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you know and let the community know that next month, we're gonna be having a conversation on this exact topic, the use of technology and the data that is generated from the technology, how it is utilized, how it's stored, how it's protected, and it's disposed of. And we'll be talking a lot about the policies behind that and citizen oversight, so I want you to know that we hear you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Kate Hutton?
Good evening, Mayor Romero and council members. My name is Kate Hutton. I am the co-executive director of the Coalition for Sonoran Desert Protection. I am authorized to speak on their behalf tonight as a retained speaker, and I'm a resident of the city of Tucson. So I'm here tonight in support of the proposed resolution that is on Ironwood Forest National Monument in front of you this evening. The monument is a big part of the coalition's history, so back at our very early days in the year 2000, we worked very hard for its establishment and actually expanding on the boundary that was originally presented for Ironwood Forest National Monument. And so we still actually think of it as our first big win was getting the monument established. A few years later, we helped to found Friends of Ironwood Forest. They're here with us this evening as well, and they have been stewarding that landscape ever since, so around 2007. So that would be another one of our big ones. We're very pleased with their successes. So we feel like this resolution that is in front of you this evening is very much carrying forward that legacy that we've helped put in place, working very hard to make sure that that monument stays part of our future here in the city of Tucson, well into the future. So it's important, not just to us, though, as a coalition. It's also important to many others across southern Arizona. As you know, many of us access the monument from here in the city of Tucson. Many visit to see wildlife that are in the monument, including our desert bighorn sheep and many other species that not only live in the monument, but also travel through the monument. So we've got 100,000 visitors a year. Actually, it's closer, 125,000 visitors a year in the monument around this time. But earlier this year, there was news of a threat from the administration against the monument and reducing its boundaries. It's not the first threat we've seen. It won't be the last threat. So back in 2017, there was a threat from that administration against the monument and its boundaries for resource extraction. So explicitly mining, they want to see more mining out at the monument and less protections. And that is exactly what we see today now in 2025 again. So part two. Again, this will continue into the future. So you're joining Pima County. You're joining the town of Morana. You're joining many local businesses and many constituents in speaking up for the monument and against the administration and many future threats that we can envision, and also demanding that our representatives and other elected officials speak up for Ironwood Forest National Monument. So I thank you for your continued leadership in protecting the public lands that surround us here in the city of Tucson. And I respectfully ask for you to vote in favor of this resolution this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kate. And stay with us, because I've requested that we consider that consent agenda item separately. So we will be discussing more on it. Thank you for coming. Julie Dittmer?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, Mike Rankin. I am currently recovering from a chronic illness, so I might need to steady myself a little bit on the podium. I'm a born and raised Tucsonian, and I recently published an op-ed in the Tucson Sentinel about NDAs and Project Blue. For anyone who is unfamiliar, NDAs are private contracts that hide key terms, such as appraisals and price, until after deals are moving. That makes it hard for residents to tell whether a deal is fair. Even after annexation is ended, FEEL has been working through TEP, a private utility. That route makes Arizona's gift clause harder for the public to identify potential gift clause violations, which is exactly why transparency matters. In plain English, the gift clause requires that any public deal serve a public purpose and give the public roughly equal value in return. You can't measure that if the documents are hidden. I've already filed a public records request for the appraisal. I understand that these things take time to process, and I know that the clerk's office and staff are working hard. But that's the point. But that's the point. Residents shouldn't have to file requests and wait just to see documents that determine whether a deal meets our constitutional guardrails. That information should be posted upfront. The current system makes the process harder for staff, harder for residents, and harder for you as elected officials to build trust. The county recently capped NDAs at two years, which is progress, but Tucson can go further. Here's a straightforward set of rules I hope that Tucson can adopt now. One, cap NDAs at 180 days with automatic unsealing at first public notice. Two, post appraisals, offsets, and term sheets at least 14 days before votes. Three, maintain a public NDA log with titles, parties, date, scope, and status, even if we can't see what's in the NDA. Four, hold public hearings and publish cooling method plus water slash power estimates for any special utility agreements tied to unusually high demand. Even if Project Blue fades, another proposal will come, so I hope we can set the rules now so that the next debate happens in daylight, and please let me know if there's anything I can do as a citizen to help. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Pedro Gonzalez. Pedro Gonzalez. Here with us.
Buenas tardes. Don't start my time yet. I wanna, wanna say something here. I guess we're the same. Well, I had a, a speech that I was gonna say, but I normally don't, don't follow speeches. I'm here because of the 10th Avenue housing that is proposed. You know, I, I'm really concerned about this body, Mayor and Council, that, you know, to this day, the barrios, you know, I love my barrio. I'm from Barrio Viejo. I love my barrio. I know you love Tucson, but I love my barrio, my barrios. And one of the things where we, you know, we're always concerned about is how is the city gonna engage with us? Are you really gonna engage with us? Are you gonna really give us lip service? Are you gonna take advantage of the people, of the, of the brown people in the barrios? Are you, are you gonna do that? Because when they talk to us, they don't talk to us. They don't talk to us like you guys talk to, like, talk to white people. You talk to us down. And so in 19, in 1966, the city of Tucson displaced all the families here in urban removal. It was ethnic cleansing, 1966. I got to live all that. I was 10 years old. My family's displaced. We were displaced. In, in 1983, 200 units, La Reforma Housing Projects were demolished. Black and brown people were displaced. In 2003, the county chambers, housing projects were perfectly, just like La Reforma, were good housing. The, the structures were good, and what did the city do? They got hard money and they destroyed, demolished over 200 units of the, of, of county chambers housing projects. Now you, the city's proposing 200, 300 units, all rentals, whatever you're calling it, affordable housing. It's not affordable to us. Affordable, I don't know what it means to, to you, but there's no such thing in brown, with brown people, people in the barrios affordable, because what, what this body has done, and not personally say anything, but what you guys have done is caused gentrification, more gentrification. Thank you. Oh, for the record, I have a letter here. Would I give it to the city clerk?
It's open.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you. Edward Niño or Nino?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm piggybacking on Pedro. I'm here to address the council and the mayor on the 10th Avenue Housing Project situation and how the residents of Barrio West Ochoa are not happy at all with the lack of communication between the city and the residents. We've had multiple meetings over the last two years with various city employees and have made multiple requests to have questions answered again and again, and have been told again and again, we will answer you later, even though when we were told, the questions would be answered at the next meeting. This really shows a lack of respect for the residents and the barrios. We get information in dribs and drabs and are just paid lip service to keep us pacified, and now we have found out that the infrastructure of the 10th Avenue Housing Project is to begin this coming October. At the last meeting with the city, we asked again for the dozenth plus time to be part of the process and have a seat at the table at the 10th Avenue Housing Project, and we were told, no, again, residents were not needed there. How can the city not let the residents of not only Barrio Ochoa, but the other local barrios to the project not be part of the process when you're always preaching inclusivity? Why? I'm no longer asking the city. We are demanding that the city practice what they preach, inclusivity, that the city from now on include the barrios that Mr. Pedro Gonzalez comes from, Santa Rosa, Barrio Libre, Barrio Viejo, along with Barrio West Ochoa in the 10th Avenue meetings, and that they are given notice via mailers in English and Spanish, because many folks in these barrios do not have computers. And it took us eight months to get the city for Barrio West Ochoa to send out mailers. Also that the mayor and the city councilwoman, Lane Santa Cruz, attend at least a few meetings of the housing project, as they have not been to one meeting since April of 2024. As taxpaying citizens, we demand that our dignity and rights be upheld, no more and no less. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I really don't know exactly where this project is at. I know that both Vice Mayor and I attended a meeting and then gave direction to work with the community on the issues and their concerns, so I, I'm not too sure exactly where this is coming from. Is there a possibility of following up?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, absolutely. We'll get the contact information from the clerk. I'll reach out personally to both gentlemen that spoke tonight. Assistant City Manager Liz Morales has been involved since day one, and I've attended some of those meetings that you're referring to. So we'll just make sure that we, we follow up and get things back on track.
Yeah, that would be, I would, I really appreciate it because I think that there's simple answers, especially to the affordability question. But yeah, if we can follow up and have an SNECA with housing community development, follow up with, with these individuals and see what their needs are. All righty.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mary Ann Trombino. I am here to once again discuss the Kingston Kitchen slash CDs slash now Decrone Restaurant Business. I live about 400 feet north of the business that's in the strip mall on Speedway. It's my, their address is 5305 East Speedway. Mine is 5313 Northeast Bellevue. They continue to run their restaurant business on Fridays and Saturday nights as a nightclub, and the noise, the thumping noise continues into our neighborhood, and there's other residents in our neighborhood that also are affected by this. We visited this when Steve Kasachik was here and came to an agreement that the owner agreed that the closing time would be 10:00 PM on Monday and through Saturday, 8:00 PM on Sunday. There will be no events in which music is played, with the exception of karaoke on some occasional Friday and Saturday evenings, and on those days, they would remain closed at 10:00 PM, and there would be no dancing or DJ music. And actually, Mr. Rankin was part of that agreement. Decrown is under new ma, or Kingston Kitchen is under new management now. It's called Decrown. It's, it's still owned by the same person. They do not have any business hours posted on their business nor on their website, so it's, so it's always, who knows when the music is gonna be playing, and there is dancing there. So I am asking Ward Six and also the city council or the people who deal with the liquor license, they're, they're up for a new liquor license, and I'm objecting to that until something can be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Trombino. I, I'm gonna request that the city manager have a follow-up on this. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Jessica Allen, and I'm here as a concerned homeowner in the Sugar Hill neighborhood. I live three blocks from Star Village. My neighbors and I have emailed the mayor's office regarding ongoing issues with drugs and homeless in the industrial area of Sugar Hill neighborhood many times. I'm sure the mayor's office is well aware of the issues we have in this area. So my question is, how are homeless women going to be safe in a neighborhood that is too dangerous to walk your dog around the block? Your security isn't going to follow the women and children through the neighborhood as they commute, so who is going to be keeping these people safe in the neighborhood? You're not doing anything as far as the drugs and the criminals in the area, but you're adding 25 new people to an area that is dangerous. And when I say dangerous, I mean dangerous. I purchased my home over a year ago in this area, and the reason I purchased my home was the security around it. I've got an autistic daughter, and I thought that was great, just having that security around my home. But when I learned more about the neighborhood, I learned that this neighborhood has a big drug dealer, drug user, and criminal problem, and a lot of it has to do with the homeless in the area. There's no women in our area that are vulnerable. It's all men, and I can go out and take pictures at any point in the day and show you that with proof. I don't appreciate having to explain drugs being done out in the open with no consequences to my 12-year-old autistic daughter, because that's what we see driving home. Why don't you care about the safety of these women or even the safety of the homeowners and the business owners? Do you really think it is humane putting people in tents and keeping them outside when indoor facilities offering safe sleeping options are sitting at 50%? So I ask, who do we hold responsible when this doesn't work and when the neighbors' crime rate, when the neighborhood's crime rates become worse than they already are? Who do we hold responsible when the children at the bus stop a block away from where you are putting Star Village are harassed and they are no longer able to get a safe ride to get an education? You said, Mayor Romero, that you were not doing this to the community. You are doing this with the community, but the community had no part in this, nor was the community even aware until this news story came out. That's not doing this with the community, and I feel like you, Mayor Romero, need to spend some time in our neighborhood and see what we are fighting against every day. I have worked hard as a homeowner, protecting my home and the safety of my family, fighting these homeless people. Law for NHTRA put a place at the corner of our street that was supposed to be managed with security. This was almost 30 years ago, and the neighborhood had to sign off on that. And let me tell you what's happening there now. Nobody manages this property at 113 Flora Street. That doesn't happen. There is no manager on site. There are drug dealers inside that complex that I just personally got evicted because I personally worked with TPD to get that done, and I contacted Law for NHTRA myself. But there are still drug users in that apartment complex that go right around the corner behind that complex, right next to my home and the home next to me, and do their drugs all night, all day. This is not a safe neighborhood for this, and I ask you to please reconsider your decision, because I think that if you're gonna try to help people, you should put them in an area that's gonna be safe for them, not an area that's gonna cause them more harm. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. We will make sure that we follow up and give you all of the information that you need.
Mayor Romero and Council, my name is Christine Flanagan. I'm a citizen of Tucson. I'm also the president of the Friends of Ironwood Forest, and I just want to say thank you for considering this resolution in support of Ironwood Forest National Monument. We are in the 25th anniversary year, and for 25 years, save for a couple of years back in 2017, we were secure in the boundaries of our monument. That may no longer be the case. We are waiting to see if there will be a proposal to reduce the size of the monument in order to permit further extraction, especially from, I think it's going to come from a copper mine that's near us. I want to remind you that Ironwood Forest National Monument is in a primitive area that is surrounded by the growing cities of Casa Grande, Eloy, Morana, and Tucson. It's a place where people go for solitude. It's a place where wildlife migrates through from the many isolated mountain ranges, and it serves as a pressure valve against the changes that are brought with climate change and drought. So Ironwood Forest National Monument is an important part of our heritage going forward. It's an important piece of public land for our local area, so I encourage you to vote in support of the resolution. And I would remind you that on June 7th, when we celebrated the anniversary of Ironwood Forest, over 100 people drove 25 miles out into the desert to hold up signs that said, "Public land is not for sale land." And we strongly believe that in Tucson, in this area, and I know you believe it too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. This is gonna be our last speaker, David Godleski.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is David Godleski. My office is 2840 North Country Club. I'm the president and CEO of the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association. I guess that makes me a paid speaker. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'd actually like to talk to, about something that I don't think has received the attention that it really deserves. Arizona, as well as the other lower base states, are in the midst of a very serious discussions to protect our fair and what I think is our legal share of Colorado River Water. If you wanted more information, I would encourage you to check out AWR Director Tom Bouchotsky's op-ed in the Denver Post recently. Specifically, I'd like to commend Mayor Romero for joining other mayors across the state to form the Coalition for Protecting Arizona's Lifeline. This is a nonpartisan alliance advocating for Arizona's allocation of the Colorado River Water and the CAP. As the mayor mentioned in her comments, this, Tucson relies on this water to support our homes, our businesses, and our environment. And so while Tucson has done an exceptional job of creating a culture of conservation and led many innovative efforts to protect our water resources while also facilitating sustainable growth and setting the stage for economic opportunity, we must do more and continue to work at these high levels to advocate for the CAP. And, you know, firstly, I, I may have been known from time to time to being critical of certain water policies or development-related processes, but it's really your collective efforts that, in managing our water resources, that will allow us to thrive in a drier future, and this is a success story that I deserve, that I think deserves to be told. I'd also be remiss if I didn't say, in my experience in, in serving with City Manager Tom Mura and a number of statewide committees and councils as well as other Tucson Water staff, your team is, is held in very, very high regards around the state for their technical expertise and leadership, and so I stand ready to work with you as, as our organization does to protect the CAP allocation and achieve a water future where we can achieve our social, environmental, and economic goals. And now I'd like to make a hard-right turn and get in on the, the Mike Rankin Day accolades. I've known Mike for over 15 years, always in a, in a professional capacity and held him in very high regards, but I got a, an opportunity to see kind of firsthand the quality of a human being he is when I bumped into him at the Festival of Books a few years ago, doing setup and, and teardown for his kid's band, and so I'm glad he's been able to turn his side hustle into what I assume is a very lucrative post-retirement career. Thank you.
We move on to item seven. Consent agenda items. Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into make part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda. Item A is financial participation agreement with the Sonoran Institute for Expansion if it's living river Tucson report. This item is being considered separately at the request of Councilmember Cunningham. Item B is a financial participation agreement with Tucson Clean and Beautiful for management of Tucson's, Tucson Waters Green Storm Water Infrastructure Mini Grants Program. Items C through G are lease agreements with T-Mobile, West LLC, DBA T-Mobile for telecommunication, telecommunications facilities at Grease Road Road and Speedway Boulevard. telecommunication facilities at Greasrud Road and Speedway Boulevard LF 0520 RP Row 1255 South Beverly Avenue LF 0050 RP 631. The next one is at 4796 East Grant Road LF 0426 RP Row. The next one is 3544 East Broadway Boulevard LF 0051 RP Row. And the last mobile communications is at 7167 East Escalante Road LF 0489 RP Row. Item H is Tucson Fiber to the Premises FTP Fiber License and Right-of-Way Use Agreement. This item is being considered separately at the request of Councilwoman Lee. Item A is the final plat for TD DIV 0424 0034 Campbell Estates Lots 1 through 8. Item J is the final plat for TD DIV 1124 0091 The Palms Lots 1 and 2. Item K is an IGA between the City of Tucson and Arizona Department of Transportation for the Irvington Road Traffic Interchange Project. Item L is an agreement for tree propagation and operation of the City of Tucson's Tree Tree Resource Education and Ecology Center. Item M is a resolution declaring support for Ironwood Forest National Monument and opposing a reduction of its boundaries for resource extraction. This item will be considered separately at the request of Mayor Romero. Item N is a labor agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees ASME Local 905. So an appropriate motion, Mayor, would be to approve items A through N, with the exception of items A, H, and M, which will be considered separately.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We need to go to roll call. Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mr. Dahl.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mick Sulek.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Romero. Aye. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of 7-0.
Item, yes. The first item to be considered separately is item A at the request of Councilmember Cunningham.
Yes, Your Honor. I'm in support of this. Obviously, the living river study for the Santa Cruz River is very important, and I'm very much okay with spending the money over five years to do it. It's good use. But we're missing an opportunity here. In Tucson, we have some other watersheds. Agua Caliente Wash, Pantano Wash, also known as the Señica Creek, the Tanque Verde Creek, and the Relito River. Those are all possible opportunities to also have a living river study done. Now, I don't know if we, I don't want to do that now, but I want to put that in staff's ear, that we've got to think about these living rivers in other areas of town, just not the Santa Cruz. I think that's an opportunity for us. And as water becomes more and more precious, we've talked, we talked about stormwater today. We talked about the lake mead levels today. I think that has to be on our radar. So with that, I move the item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. We need roll call. Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mr. Dahl.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mick Sulek.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Romero. Aye. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of 7-0.
The next item to be considered separately is item H at the request of Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for giving us a chance to talk about this item. As the vice mayor said earlier in this meeting, we have to celebrate our wins when we can get them, and I think this is a significant program that we're moving forward tonight. So I wanted to take a moment and talk about this. As far as my time on the council back in 2021, I remember something called Project Coconut because, you know, we have to have a fun name for everything. It was a fiber provider, not dietary fiber, but fiber optic internet provider, slight distinction there, who was knocking on Tucson's door and wanted to enter the market and bring fiber connectivity to the city. And it, at the time, we didn't really have a mechanism, up until tonight, to allow fiber providers to come in. Everything was contingent on cable, like Cox and Comcast, to bring more fiber online. So our team has been busy at work trying to figure out how we can introduce more internet service providers into the market, which will therefore drive down costs for all of us, which I am personally excited about because we pay a lot for internet. I live in a corner of the city where we only have one or two options, and they are very expensive. So I am very eager for this to come online. So, you know, by having fiber optic cable accessible across the city, we can do a lot of really great things in terms of smart city technology, intelligent traffic management, gunshot detection, smoke detection, environmental monitoring, and all kinds of things that this infrastructure enables. It also is putting a dig-once approach in place. I know once we get our roads done and then we see them getting cut, you know what I'm talking about. They're digging up the roads, and it's maddening. And so there's going to be a lot of alignment in that. And I actually want to give, Sam, I see you're here, I want to give you a moment to speak about it because I was just going to acknowledge your team, Sam, DTM, and how much work you all have been doing in parallel with IT. And Sam, if you want to talk about this at all in your own words and give any shout-outs, please do so.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Lee, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this. You're right. And I actually, Jen and I were just kind of chatting because I worked on Project Coconut when I was in the city manager's office. And this is an exciting moment for the City of Tucson to be able to provide an opportunity to have fiber communications across the city. It does provide amazing opportunities, not only for our community to have access to fast and affordable internet, but for all the other reasons that you talked about. I'll take the balance of my time at the microphone to acknowledge my colleagues who worked on this, including our deputy director, Jen Toothaker, who is sitting with me in the audience. She has spent a tremendous amount of time working on this, also from her time in the manager's office, as well as the Department of Transportation and Mobility. Director Mozzarella with IT has been a wonderful partner, seeing his vision through with this. He has a great team supporting him, such as Jason. And we also have a wonderful partner in our contractor who's helping us get this program up and running. So we are very excited and eager to have this template approved tonight because the next steps, as we open it up to the public, allow those fiber companies to apply, begin negotiations, and then we'll bring those individual agreements back to mayor and council for approval. Thank you very much.
So super exciting. Thank you for all of your work. And with that, Mayor, I would like to move the item forward.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Sam and Jen, so much for your work, and also Director Mozzarella for his work on this. Everyone, it's taken some time and appreciate, appreciate the work. Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Dahl.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mick Sulek.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham. Mayor Romero. Aye. The item on the consent agenda is approved by a vote of 7-0.
The next item is item M at your request, Mayor.
Yes, I wanted to consider this item separately to officially share our support for the opposition of reducing the boundaries of the Ironwood Forest National Monument, particularly for the reason of resource extraction. Colleagues, before us, we have today a resolution. It's a statement of the values of the City of Tucson and of my colleagues and I on the council and our community. We're being asked to call on Arizona's congressional delegation to retain the full designation and protections of the Ironwood Forest National Monument, one of Southern Arizona's most iconic landscapes. The Trump administration has tried before to shrink and privatize national monuments across our country specifically for resource extraction. We cannot let the Ironwood Forest be next. The Ironwood Forest National Monument is quintessential Sonoran Desert, a biodiverse treasure just a short drive from Tucson. It spans 190,000 acres, seven mountain ranges, and multiple wildlife corridors. It's a natural wild state that supports not only our ecology, but our identity as a desert city. The Silverbell Mountains hold the highest-known density of ironwood trees in the Sonoran Desert. These trees can live for up to 800 years and give shelter to saguaros and countless other species. Ragged Top Mountain alone is home to 674 species, including 64 mammals, 54 bird species, and is just an oasis. The Ironwood Forest also protects the last viable herd of bighorn sheep indigenous to the Tucson Basin. It is sacred ground. Thousands of years of human history are reflected in archaeological sites, petroglyphs, and cultural places that are sacred to the Tojono'otam and Pasquayaki people. To shrink this protection would dishonor that heritage. It protect, if protections are rolled back, mining companies could gain access at the expense of everyone else. Roads, artificial lights, and noise would scar the land, sever wildlife corridors, and destroy the very experience that makes the monument valuable. This isn't speculation. We've seen it happen elsewhere. When federal protections are rolled back, extractions win and people lose. This resolution affirms Tucson's voice in protecting lands that are essential to our environment, our culture, and our economy. It demonstrates to Congress that local governments are paying attention and that we expect full protection of the Ironwood Forest National Monument and that our city stands united in defending public lands. Passing this resolution puts us on record as leaders, not bystanders, in the fight to protect our desert heritage. I would ask to move this resolution, please.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Councilmember Dahl.
Thank you. Words can barely express how much I endorse this proposal. But first, I have to bring back the prop. This is an ironwood tree. Just so we know, a small part of what we're protecting there. My history with this goes back. I was very early on involved with the Coalition for Sonoran Desert Protection. In my photograph album, I have a picture of myself and Arizona's Bruce Babbitt, who was Secretary of the Interior at the time when this was designated by President Clinton. I've been at events out there where the former representative, Raul Garrova, spoke, where he was vice chairman at the time, but now Chairman Verlin Jose spoke on how much the monument meant to him. I've been out there with Felipe Molina, who's an elder with the Yaki tribe, see some of the sites that are important to him. It's an amazing place. It should always be an amazing place, not just for us, but for our children and our children's children. And that's why I was so happy to make this motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Any others? All righty, let's go to roll call. Mr. Dahl.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mick Sulek.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Romero. Aye. The item on the consent agenda is approved by a vote of 7-0. Thank you so much for bringing it to us. Thank you. Item eight, rezoning ordinance adoption C9-21-14, The Place at Mason Ranch Phase II, Donqueverde Road SR to R3. City manager's communication number 274 dated September 9th is received and made part of the record. This is a request for an ordinance to rezone approximately 3.6 acres from SR to R3 zoning. The rezoning site is located north of Donqueverde Road and west of Bear Canyon Road. The preliminary development plan proposes 56 new apartment units in two-story buildings as Phase II of The Place at Mason Ranch, a multifamily apartment community. The total project site area, including both faces, has a total of 312 apartment units proposed. The city manager and zoning examiner recommend approval of the rezoning request. Is the applicant or representative of the applicant present? I don't see them. All righty. We don't have the applicant or representative to agree to the proposed requirements. I think that Councilmember Cunningham, you have had some communication with.
So, yeah, there's a couple of things going on here. This is actually not a rezoning per se. We actually already passed this in 2022, but they had to meet a bunch of, we gave them a number of conditions to meet. So now they're back before us, and we've affirmed that they've met those conditions.
Okay.
The main part of this rezoning happened, but just so everybody understands, there's a donut hole in the, there's a donut of SR1 space that's zoned SR1, and the rest of it is already zoned C3 surrounding. Also, all three adjacent properties are R3. So this is filling that and finishing out this project. I think that's how I understand it. I didn't even, I think this is more of a formality. So I'm going to move the item.
Okay. So Ms. Sulek, you are requested to read Ordinance 12189 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 12189 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located approximately 500 feet north of Donqueverde Road and 700 feet west of Bear Canyon Road in KC 921-14, The Place at Mason Ranch Phase II, Donqueverde Road SR to R3, and setting an effective date.
Councilmember Cunningham, did I hear you, that you moved to approve?
Yeah, I moved the item, and I want to make sure that we have on the record that, well, no, actually, I have a question. So I'll move the item, and then in a second, I'll ask the question discussion.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham.
I think part of this was part of a pre-annexation. Was this part of a pre-annexation agreement?
Councilmember Cunningham, Honorable Mayor members of council, this, as Councilmember Cunningham referenced earlier, the mayor and council did act on this in 2022. They went through the authorization process for the rezoning, and so the conditions were established at that time, and the applicant did agree to the conditions. Now they're back for the ordinance adoption, having shown compliance with the conditions. So I don't know that there was an annexation in connection with it. I don't think so. There wouldn't have been because it was an authorization. So, but you are correct that the conditions already have been agreed upon and satisfied.
All righty. I have no other discussion. Roll call. Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mr. Dahl.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mick Sulek. Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Romero. Aye. Ordinance 12189 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item nine, rezoning ordinance adoption C9-19-10 Corbett 29th Street, R1 to R2. City manager's communication number 282 dated September 9th is received and made part of the record. This is a request for an ordinance to rezone approximately 6.88 acres from R1 to R2 zoning. The rezoning site is located on the northeast corner of 29th Street and Sawada Avenue. The applicant is developing a single-family residential subdivision of 71 lots with 12 guest parking spaces at a density of 10.34 RAC. The rezoning was authorized by mayor and council on November 6, 2019. The city manager and zoning examiner recommend approval of the rezoning request. I don't know if the applicant or representative of the applicant, if they are present. I don't see them here. All righty, Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 12190 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 12190 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located at the northeast corner of 29th Street and Sawada Avenue in KC 919-10 Corbett 29th Street, R1 to R2, and setting an effective date.
Councilmember Sulek.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the request and the ordinance adoption for R2 zoning, subject to the conditions as reflected in the ordinance.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call. Mick Sulek.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Dahl.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mayor Romero. Aye. Ordinance 12190 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 10.
Adjournment.
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, at or after 5:30 PM. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a wonderful rest of your week.